I'd like to call to order. I'd like to call to order the Lawrenceburg City Council meeting for tonight, March nineteenth, two thousand twenty. Could I get a roll call, please?
Sure. Is this a regular council or a special council?
Special, but it's it's for city council.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
You you got it?
Uh, we got councilperson Tommy Rulet.
Present.
Councilperson Tony Abbott.
Here.
Councilperson Justin Novart.
Yes, sir.
Councilperson Lenny Fryman.
Present.
Councilperson Brett.
Yes.
City Attorney Dale Weldon.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Malone.
Here.
And myself.
Okay, um, appreciate you guys being here again, but um, I got a few a few things we gotta talk about, but hopefully we can get through them. Um, the first thing I'd like to to do is uh, just explain uh, to you guys that uh, we are gonna be, we're gonna need to set up a meeting um, to talk about um, our small, you know, our businesses downtown and things like that. Uh, there's a lot of, I had a merchant meeting the other day, there's a lot of concern. Obviously, everybody's concerned, we're concerned, everybody is. And uh, so I told them that, you know, the state is coming out with a program with programs. Obviously, they're gonna have to, you know, look at that and then whatever we can come up with to try and help, we obviously can do that and uh, so be thinking about those those ideas. Uh, I got I got a couple, three of my own that I'd like to share with you guys, but I think we we just need to do it in a group atmosphere for to get that done. Um, and tonight, um, I'm not prepared to lay any of it out because I need some financials and things like that. But uh, we will get on this in the very, very near future. So, just I'll I'll get something set up.
Do you want any comments from us in regards to that, just to kind of put on your radar as you're preparing that?
Right ahead.
You guys, anybody else have any? I'm just thinking about, you know.
No, go right ahead.
That we might have out there when when we do get some relief from the COVID nineteen that, you know, if we helped, you know, even even with Main Street, because I know Main Street probably has a really good pulse on, you know, how to help them best, so, you know, if there's some additional funding that maybe they need to help, you know, be creative and and um, some of the things, way we can innovate.
What we did do also in that meeting, uh, Justin was, um, uh, Mr. Messmore and Michelle uh, are the point people for the merchants right now, uh, so they're not calling my office uh, on top of everybody else that's been calling. So they're they're getting any concerns, any questions from them. And then vice versa, once a week on Fridays, uh, Michelle and Brian, they're gonna send out a an email to the merchants on any updates, okay? Um, websites that they can go to to start applying for some relief. Uh, I I know the state just came out with another one uh, yesterday. Um, so I think, you know, we need to get that information to them as well and we'll do that uh, for them. And then uh, whatever we talk about and we come up, come to agreement on, um, we will share that as well.
The only thing I can come up with right now is not shutting off their electric, you know, their utilities and making a payment program for them automatically if they need it. A longer than usual payment program.
Yeah, I've talked to the utility department and uh, we've we've got a plan for that exact thing. You're exactly right. Good idea.
Yeah, I think we're here to help, I mean, the mayor said that the other day and there's gonna be trial and error, but we can't make decisions until after we find out how this is going or how long it's gonna last. So, we just gotta wait, but we're here for them. We're not, we're not here to hurt nobody.
Nope, exactly right. Okay, um, I've asked all of our superintendents and and department heads to uh, be very cognizant of any spending going on. Um, obviously, I already look at each of the claims every week to come through. Um, I told them that I want them to only buy what is necessary uh, because of uh, you know, casino shutdown, we got, you know, other stuff, they, I don't know what the the state and feds are gonna do with uh, allowing people to maybe pay uh, their property taxes at a later date and I think there's, that's coming. Uh, if it wasn't announced today, a matter of fact. And uh, you know, that that can affect, we just wanna verify that we have the cash flow that we need. And Mr. Fetty and and his office, I I spoke with them this morning about cash flow and we we're fine right now. Uh, but uh, we just wanna make sure that we keep a close eye on that and and his office will do that. I know Mr. Gailey is gonna make some announcement tomorrow for some more details around what the governor, I think, announced today, that schools will be uh, out until May first uh, at a minimum. So uh, expect to hear stuff from that. Uh, the other thing uh, I would like to uh, uh, oh, I gotta bring up to you guys is um, all of the uh, the the gaming communities in the state are being at, the host communities are being asked to um, to bring to council is deferring their payments for ninety days. Uh, what does that mean? Well, what that means is for the next ninety days since the casinos are are closed right now, um, um, my understanding is they're working on a a plan to uh, help their employees because they're off work. Uh, but also they have no no uh, income coming in. And I, every every city uh, that has a casino in the state is being asked to defer those payments for ninety days. What I'm asking you, I think it it will equate out to approximately one point five million dollars. I think it's four hundred ninety-five thousand dollars a month, if I'm not mistaken. And what I'm asking is uh, uh, for you guys to consider tonight, uh, deferring those for ninety days. And what does deferring mean? Deferring means we are gonna get that back. They are not, not gonna pay us that ninety days of what they owe us. They will pay us when they start back up. Um, so, and we, what what I'd like tonight is if if there's, obviously any questions first, but if not, uh, I would ask that we uh, get a draft from legal uh, that we can get the casino to sign off on. Um, just stating the the basics, you know, that we were, you know, if we vote to defer, that we will be getting our money back at uh, a later date, obviously, when they start back up.
Say when you say later date, will they take ninety days to pay us back or they take a year to pay us? Put extra on each month they pay us?
My, I I, they they didn't have the details to that. Uh, but they, all they did was assured me they will, they are not gonna, it's not that they're asking for a a reprieve for the three months. They want to just defer what they, so it will be paid back.
One thing, other option with, I mean, as far as, God forbid, that it lasts longer than three months. I mean, I would assume that they would come back and ask for a more of an extension. I mean, that's, is that something?
I guess it could, I I, yeah, I mean, we don't know, right? I mean, that's that's for sure. But um, I I think right now they feel like ninety days is sufficient.
So, they would owe us four hundred some thousand even though they're closed?
Yes.
We didn't, we don't get paid just by the, I thought we got paid by the the machines being used and that that way. If they're not being used, we don't make no money anyway.
But there's a, the the ground lease.
The ground lease?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
So that that has to be paid no matter what.
We, the city, will be able to stay afloat.
And and I'll defer to Mr. Fetty if he wants to chime in, but uh, him and uh, and I and his office talked this morning and we're we're pretty confident that we we won't have any issues.
Okay. I'm sorry about that, but go back to the lease, uh, LCD is in on this lease too. And I mean, how much, do we pay them?
Well, you know, LCD uh, owns a property. Um, and then uh, it's leased to us and then we sublease it to the get, uh, the boat. Did I say that right, Mr. Weldon?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I I will approach LCD. Um, I'm I'm hoping that they would be in deferment as well. Um, and if not, then we would probably have to pay them their their piece of it, but uh, I think we can get some agreement from them, but I won't speak for them right now.
Yeah, just just to add in, I I meant, I talked to the mayor earlier today and financially, we're we're fine on the main funds that we need for each of those accounts and we'll be okay for the for the next three months.
Any other questions or comments, guys? I know this isn't fun stuff, but.
We just hope it don't last no more than ninety days, but you don't know.
We don't know. If not, then I'd entertain a motion to uh, allow us to uh, to allow the casino to defer payment for the next ninety days to the city. Um, but we would like to get a uh, some kind of a a legal document drawn up uh, to to get signatures to just, just to protect ourselves.
Yeah, I'll uh, I'll make the motion that we uh, deferment to the casino pending the legal, legal draft.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Second, Justin? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys, and I think it it speaks volumes, quite honestly. Um, Mr. Weldon, um, the adult center?
Yes, sir, your honor. If it pleases the common counsel, I would ask for a motion to engage the services of Hoover Hall Turner, who will then engage a accounting firm to take the next steps necessary with the Dearborn County Adult Center.
Okay. Questions? If not, I entertain a motion to uh, approve the um, request that Mr. Weldon had regarding the adult center.
I got one question. Should I vote on this since I was on the board member at the time, some of this?
You're not on the board.
I'm not on board.
You can vote, yeah.
Okay.
Unless, I don't think you're on the board, are you on the board?
I have to call Marie.
Give you a minute to call her.
Anyway, I would entertain a motion to approve that request.
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I'm gonna be in trouble now.
The next item, the next item I'd like to get uh, in front of you guys, we have to approve our uh, uh, the members and proxies for the uh, Regional Sewer District. Um, what I'm recommending is uh, uh, I'm a member uh, as the mayor. My proxy, proxy would be Guinevere Emery. A member currently right now is Tony Abbott from council. Uh, his proxy would be Brian Messmore. Uh, we currently are, have a vacant utility director position, but the proxy for this right now would be Andy Lyons.
Fair for me.
Questions?
One thing I would like to do, I mean, I'm, we had to wait a month till you can be on there, but I would really like to have him on, him on there because he knows everything that goes on at that sewer plant and I think that would benefit us greatly.
I, in in a few, if you, if if you're in agreement to that and everybody, but we can, when that time comes, we can make that change.
Okay.
And I would recommend that would be in the utility service board meeting.
We can do that.
And my last day will be April thirtieth, so we could possibly.
May?
If you all feel comfortable with it, make that motion or whatnot in a USB meeting.
We can do that.
April.
We can do that.
Because my last day will be the thirtieth.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
The only thing I would like to say, Mayor, and and I appreciate what you've done here. Um, with what may take place here, I would, I would like to recommend that we use Mr. Messmore as your proxy.
Okay.
And that Mrs. uh, Emery be my proxy.
Okay.
Or Tony, as I should say at this time, Mr. Abbott.
Okay.
And the reason I would say that is because Mr. Messmore has been very active in what's been going on at the sewer district for quite some time. If I were to fulfill Mr. Abbott's position, would that not take him away from said meetings?
Well, he can, he can still attend, he just wouldn't have the voting uh, mechanism. If if you're there as the person and he's your proxy, he just can't vote, but he can attend the meeting.
And with your busy schedule, as we all know, you would be, I I I'm being serious here. You would be less likely to make it. So, I.
True.
I just feel that Mr. Mess, Mr. Messmore would, it would be more beneficial if he were placed there. That's just my thoughts.
Nope, I, I don't, I I didn't have a problem either way. I I don't, I don't care, it it wouldn't matter to me either way.
With with you, Mr. Malone, is those meetings are two hours to four hours, that's a lot of time taken out of your day.
Yep. No, I agree and that, that's why I I'll be honest with you, I'm I'm not at the majority of them. I'm at some of them, but I'm not the majority.
On Messmore's day.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so can I redo it, re- re-say what we're doing here? And then uh, if it.
Everybody else is in agreement with it, I mean, I'm just.
I'm fine with it if everybody else is.
I agree with it.
Okay, so uh, I'm a member, obviously, Brian Messmore will be my proxy. Tony Abbott, current member, Guinevere Emery be his proxy. No utility director, right now Andy Lyons would be that proxy.
Yeah. I like that a lot better.
I like that. Now, one thing I would say is when we get a utility director, we can't lose Andy. Yeah, I mean, Andy's very knowledgeable about this stuff too, I like people that knows what's going on.
Like I said, proxies can attend the meetings.
Alright, okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, well, I entertain a motion to approve the uh, the members and the proxies for the SDRSD.
I'll move that we approve this.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, the last thing is. Linkmire?
Yes, sir, your honor. If it pleases the common counsel, I would ask for a motion to authorize that we uh, accept from them, if they're willing to pay the entire principal, that we would forgive the interest. Um, and then also for the proposed veterans project to convey to them that we are willing to immediately at any time, even today, to release our lien as to that property in exchange for the proceeds so that they can build the VA. So we, so what I ask for is a vote to do either of those or both of those if they uh, agree.
I'll make a motion that we.
Yeah, can I make a suggestion? I think we need to separate them.
Yeah, we could do that too.
I think that that's my opinion, I don't know how you guys feel.
The two, separate the two different deals?
I'm sorry, separate both, yes.
The two of those.
That'll be my, my opinion, but.
The only reason I'm voting to do it is because we're getting the VA or else I'd be going after interest after all this time.
But I do like your ideal separation. So.
You okay with separating them, everybody?
What you already wants, good for you.
Well, then I would entertain a motion to approve the um, the request to go back to Linkmire Development and uh, have our attorney say uh, that we we want to accept the uh, the VA um, project and we will release the lien on that portion of the property in exchange for the proceeds that they collect from that sale.
Be included in the the amount that they would.
And it would be, it would be deducted from the full amount that they owe us.
Minus the interest.
Only if they.
Right.
They handle the second part of this.
Confusing.
Yeah, we're making it too, too hard here, okay?
So let's, let's clean this up.
Yeah, and what we're gonna do is we're gonna accept, uh, I, we want you, the attorneys to go back to Linkmire Development's attorneys and say we would uh, immediately accept um, the release of the land for the VA project in exchange for the funds that they are receiving for that and it will be deducted from the uh, amount of the settlement from the other piece of the of the property.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
VA is gonna be a great thing for the city.
Yeah.
Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. The second part of this would be that uh, we have our attorneys go back to Linkmire Development attorneys and uh, request that they pull, pay the full amount uh, and uh, with interest if they don't uh, if they, if they, unless they would choose to uh, accept our offer now and we would then deduct the amount of interest and just take the principal.
So they would be paying us in full of the.
I like to, I'm trying to take minutes on this right here, I like to back up. Can you state the last motion that you had, the first motion that you had? Yeah, the VA. You don't mind?
Yeah.
I have, I don't know if, the last part I think I didn't quite get right.
You're, you're trying to trick me, aren't you?
I, I.
Mayor's worked about a hundred hours this week, I understand.
Uh, no, but the, the, it was, it was more of uh, we're, we're allowed, we want our attorneys to go back to Linkmire Development attorneys to uh, tell them that we will immediately uh, release the lien on the portion of the land for the VA project in exchange for the proceeds of what they are getting be paid to us and will be deducted from.
Part I'm missing, deducted from what?
From the amount that they agree to uh, the full amount that they agree to pay us.
For the amount they owe us.
Okay.
And that's gonna be determined in the next motion.
Yeah.
By what they choose to do in the next motion, right?
And they can do either of these, they just wanna do the VA.
Yes.
They can and will.
Yeah, they wanna do the VA, we'll, we'll do it tomorrow, I think, is what, what you guys are saying. So, we voted, we voted on that?
Yes.
That's, that's, yeah, unanimous.
On your, on your second motion for the second part of it, can we put a days, thirty days on that or something? I don't wanna wait four months again for them to say, ah, nope.
Okay. So they have thirty days to.
Pay.
Pay us uh.
Sixty?
Just, I mean, just to be realistic.
Pay the other balance that they owe us, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Well.
I don't want, I mean, I want it to get down to.
How about thirty days to agree or not agree and sixty days to pay in full?
Got it. To pay the principal.
Are you alright with that?
But if you wanna put that in form of a motion, correct?
Okay, let me, I'll try.
Well, and what we're saying is, correct me if I'm wrong, if they pay us in full on the money they owe us, after the possible deduction of the property, we will drop all the interest, is that the way I'm understanding this?
That's if they, if they decide within thirty days, here's what it is, let me, let me take a shout at this, okay? Um, if Linkmire Development chooses to uh, pay us the amount of the principal that is currently owed, um, and it could be less the amount of the VA project, if it, if they so choose, if they do this within thirty days, we will take, we will uh, forego any interest. If they take longer.
Or, in full, accrued interest.
Uh, and any interest is owed as of today.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. What do you question?
I was just wondering if that amount included, the total amount included some interest from the past.
No, I'm saying that they, if they pay within thirty days, we're not gonna charge.
We're not gonna charge many interest.
We're just doing the principal amount.
Principle's always the same, always will be the same.
Yeah.
It's the way I understand it.
And then if they choose to uh, not give us an answer within thirty days or uh, that would, you know, of yes, that they will pay us in full for the principal amount, then um, they have um, then they will be required to pay the principal amount plus any accrued interest from the time that this was uh, determined into court.
Well.
You wanna take a shot?
Now, uh, the only thing that I just don't wanna gum, I don't wanna muddy the waters because we are in the middle of collections against them, we have charging orders and garnishments. We're also, we have a sheriff's sale scheduled uh, really soon on that property, so I don't want it to seem like we're stopping either one of those things because we're not. I think the, if it, if it's okay, just the vote would be, if they pay the principal, then we'll forgive the interest, but I wouldn't put a deadline on it because I don't want it to appear that we're gonna stop the sheriff's sale or we're gonna stop collections. It's just anytime they want, they can pay the principal and we'll take, we'll deduct the interest.
So we don't need to put a da- a timeline on when we want an answer?
I would just ask that you don't because these other things are happening already. We're in court for collections and we're in court for the sheriff's sale and we've already gotten the foreclosure.
Do you feel comfortable with that? I mean, what if this prolongs on for longer than?
Well, the foreclosure will take place before that, that timeframe.
Excuse me?
The foreclosure would take place before that timeframe.
They would probably not want that, so they would probably give you, give us.
Who knows?
Well, we don't either, want it either, so I mean, we'd rather, you know, it be paid and settled, right? Then.
But if we don't put a payment time on it, couldn't they just say, okay, well, we'll pay you next year? We'll sign this agreement, but we'll pay you next year.
We're gonna foreclose before then.
You can't, not if you sign, not if we sign this agreement.
There, there would be no agreement.
Well, let's not, we're gonna get, we're the, so just to be very clear, so this discussion is not a vote, this is a discussion.
Right, can we just authorize you to draw up something for us and we can deal with this in a, in a, in a next meeting?
Well, I don't wanna leave anything hanging out there, I want them to know exactly where they stand and I want us to know exactly where we stand, I want the public to know exactly where we stand.
Motion on the table to.
Oh, yeah.
The first one, we, the first motion was made.
Well, guys, we're at this, yeah.
Yeah. On the VA?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The VA is fine, we'll take.
It was approved.
Yeah. So I mean, I'm saying that's motion's done, I mean, we, if, it's, so we don't muddy the waters, we're gonna get it, make it clear. I mean, I don't, it's.
Clear balance.
As far as clear is the second motion that we're, that we're trying to.
I would just say, you know, Dell, have, have Joe Sprafki go back and just say, you know, we're, you know, they know that we voted the other night to reject the offer. The, the offer on the table is pay in full now and there will be no accrued interest added to that. If not, if not, then the accrued interest will take place.
But that's what is now, that's, that's what we're trying to determine.
We, please don't, I'm asking you not to put a date on it.
Okay.
I'm asking, and if I, if it's okay, I'll.
The foreclosure's gonna take place before even thirty days.
And the collections, they're in collections, they're going to court soon uh, on collections. So I don't want them to be misled, I don't want you to be misled, I don't want the public to be misled. So, all, what I would ask for, and you can, you guys can do whatever you like, is that you just vote to allow us to tell them that if they pay the principal, we'll forgive the interest, but with the understanding that we're not stopping or postponing the sheriff's sale for the property and we're not stopping or postponing the collections. Is that okay?
That's understood.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make the motion what Dell said.
Do we need a motion on that or we just?
You want that in a form of a?
Yes, please.
Alright. Can I get a motion on uh, the way Dell had uh, wordsmithed this for us? Tony?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, um, that is all I have, yes.
Your honor, if it pleases the counsel, I would just ask that we, we don't have to restate all the terms, but I'd ask that the council votes to also approve the work from home uh, scenario that the mayor brought up in the Board of Works because council is a fiscal body. I think it's prudent that you also weigh in on that.
Although it shouldn't cost us more money.
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, as uh, as discussed in Board of Works, uh, the policy for the work at home will be uh, is being drafted as we speak, actually, and uh, will be rolled out tomorrow and I'm asking for permission to uh, uh, to get this policy moving forward and approved. Um, because we'd like to start this policy on Monday. Um, so I'd like, I'd entertain a motion to be able to do that.
I'll make the motion to do so.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anything else anybody has?
Alright. I was gonna do this after me, but.
No more comments to the audience.
I just wanted, I think it's, this might be the, the right time to just make this announcement uh, that the, based on the things that the governor's done and proclamations that affect open door law, I just wanna make it known that for now and and while this emergency with COVID nineteen is occurring, it is permissible to have public meetings with just one member of the governing body physically present and everyone else participates electronically and we can limit the total amount of people in the room to no more than ten. Now, not that you're gonna do that or that you would do that, but I just wanted to let everyone know that that is occurring, state of the law and I thought that'd be important to announce on YouTube, so everyone knows that.
And what we can do is uh, if 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 you prefer to stay home and call in or we can get, uh, we can set up a, a, a meeting, uh, on, online meeting or whatever, uh, it's just a call in number with a, a meeting ID number.
I'm, I'm kind of against that, I like everybody being in one place, talking back and forth with the ideas and it's over the phone, it's a little bit different. But as far as ten people, if we put these chairs six feet apart, how many people can we come up with? More than ten, I think.
Well, we're trying to, we're, here's, I, I agree. I mean, that right now they're, you know, most, we had them six foot apart uh, for our previous meetings. Um, so we can, we can make sure that happens. Um, but I, as far as the meeting process, it's an individual decision. You may want to be here. Justin may not.
Well, that and if any one of us is a...
And if either one of yours are sick, you can call in.
If you're sick, you definitely should be.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, that's good.
Don't come in. I mean, it's, I don't think we've seen the last of it.
No. Okay. Okay, well, what I owe you guys then is a date to, to, to start talking about some kind of a, uh, to hel, help for small business and directions to look and things like that. So I'll get you guys a date for that. Um, also we'll send you copies of the COVID-19 policy we rolled out yesterday and the one for tomorrow. I'll send to each council member tomorrow.
That'd be as an email?
Yes. Yes. Uh, anything else?
I'll just comment, um, thanks, Mr. Mayor, for all your work through this. I know that you've been burning a candle at both ends and, um, there's, there's a lot to, a lot on your shoulders and, um, just want to tell you, we're with you and, um, we're, we're with the, we're with the citizens here in our city and we're gonna, we're gonna continue to press forward to be vigilant about, um, taking this seriously, but at the same time to also be vigilant about how we're gonna move forward in the future.
Well, well, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, there's a lot of people here doing, that we're putting in a lot of hours right now, um, just trying to figure all this out. But, um, obviously we, we appreciate your guys' support and, and that's, that's most important, so. Thank you for that and, uh, what I'll end this meeting, unless maybe I got any other things going. I'll end this meeting by saying that the, the same thing that, uh, we've been telling all of our employees is check on your neighbors. Check on the neighbor down the street, maybe the person that you didn't know, the elderly person you didn't know down the street. They're all maybe gonna need something here in the near future if they don't need it now, so please check on your neighbors, so. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I was worried you guys was gonna want to stay here a little longer or something.
Motion carries.
You just wanted to hang out a little longer.
Oh, I gave him a shot and they don't take it.
Paked him out. That's what you did. Paked him out. Tommy, thanks for feeding us.